Carbonaro?
Here.
Dany?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
We've requested Pastor Andy Doyle from Christ Community Church to do our invocation this evening. Pastor Doyle?
Please stand and bow your heads as I pray. Father God, I ask you to be present with us this evening, Lord, through all the conversations and decisions that are made. Father God, I also just want to pray that you're with the families of the victims of the tragedy in Dallas and also in Baton Rouge, Lord, and I just pray for your protection upon our police department. I pray for your protection upon our emergency personnel, Lord, that Bartlett will continue to be a place of peace and prosperity. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Doyle. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Scott, you want to open up the back doors possibly? They're missing some seats back there. Next we have the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda with an asterisk are considered routine, will be enacted in one motion. No other discussion will be had on the items that are approved under consent agenda. At this point, does any board member like to add anything to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add item 12A1.
12A1 Brewster Creek Park Lot 9C1. Anybody have any discussion on that item?
No.
All right. Anything else? That being said, I'll entertain a motion, excuse me, to amend the consent agenda to include the minutes from the board meeting, board and committee minutes from July 5th, 2016, the bills list from July 19, 2016. Also on the consent agenda, under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky will be adding Brewster Creek Business Park Lot 9C-1, Exeter Corporation. And under License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaron's Committee, we will have National Night Out McGruff balloon special display permit request, National Night Out picnic in the park amplifier permit request, Motti amplifier permit request, The Jane Society amplifier permit request, Zamora amplifier permit request, Heritage Days amplifier, Heritage Days right-of-way permit request.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Dany. Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
The motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item that we have this evening on our agenda is the treasurer's report. Mr. Mark Noix.
Thank you Mayor. I'll start out this evening with the motor fuel tax allotment report for our fiscal year ended April 30th, 2016. Fiscal year-to-date revenue was $1,053,412 and that represents a 2.82 percent decrease over the same time period last year. Looking at our sales tax report for March 30th of 2016, total year-to-date revenue, $2,071,432 and that represents a 14.29 percent increase over the same time period. Something that I also wanted to do is to briefly update the village board on what happened in Springfield. As far as their budget, that began on... What happened was is the state passed a six-month budget, what that means for the village right now, that we will continue to see all of our revenues flow. That includes motor fuel tax, income tax, video gaming, and use tax. None of those revenues will be held up like they were last year. The budget also includes funds for capital and any grants that we have out there. That money will flow. Most importantly is right now, funds are flowing for the EPA loan program, which is important to us because of the improvements that we have going on with the water and sewer program. So that's what's going on right now in Springfield. Not quite sure what the last six months will play, but for now, the money will move to us.
Have they been on time? Have the payments been on time?
Yeah, they've been very good. They've...
Thank you Mr. Treasurer.
...been on time.
Next item we have this evening is the president's report. First. We have the National Night Out proclamation. So as a village once again prepares to come together to celebrate National Night Out on August 2nd.
All right.
In order to commemorate this community event, I would like to recommend the village rather consider making the proclamation in honor of this year's National Night Out. I have a task... Okay, so. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime drug and violence prevention program on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 33rd Annual National Night Out provides an exceptional opportunity for Bartlett, Illinois, to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the village of Bartlett plays a vital role in assisting the Bartlett Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Bartlett, Illinois, and is supporting National Night Out 2016 locally. And whereas it is essential all citizens of the village of Bartlett be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and understand the impact of their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Bartlett, Illinois. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are essential themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore, I, Village President Kevin Wallace, do hereby call upon all citizens of Bartlett, Illinois, to join the village of Bartlett and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 33rd Annual National Night Out on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016. Further, let it be resolved that I, Village President Kevin Wallace, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016 as National Night Out in Bartlett, Illinois. You can stick around if you want to. I know that... This will be really entertaining meeting. And as a side note to the National Night Out proclamation, for those of you in the audience, this year, the village is attempting as a celebration of our 125th anniversary to break a world record. And the world record is the number of simultaneous people blowing a train whistle. So if you can go to National Night Out even for 30 minutes, the train whistles will be there for you. Pick up a train whistle and we're going to try to break the record, which is 1,127. So we're going to try to get 1,200 or 1,300 people to blow whistles.
And you get to keep the whistle.
And you get to keep the whistle. All right. It's a ride. Next item we have this evening for the president's report is a Postamia Class Zero liquor license request, class O liquor license request, to sell alcohol at a wedding hosted at 211 West Railroad Avenue on August 27th, 2016. The village created the Class O liquor license for special events that enable those that currently hold a Bartlett liquor license for sale, for the sale and consumption of alcohol, to sell and offer sale alcohol off premises. For a planned event, that is by, the event must be by invitation or by reservation. And event at 211 West Railroad is that indeed. It's a wedding. So Postamia has requested the Class O liquor license to sell alcohol at the wedding hosted at 211 West Railroad Avenue, August 27th, 2016. So I would entertain a motion. So if the board doesn't have any to be voted on? It's kind of involved in this one. We might win a vote. Okay. So there is no motion necessary. And I intend, unless there's no issues with the board, I intend to issue that license for Postamia. Also on the agenda this evening, we have Bannerman Sports Grill Class O liquor license request, and this is an interesting one. It's requesting this to serve drinks at the Kickstand Classic on September 25th, 2016. So I'm assuming this will be at the finish line and a big event area at the end. And so, in compliance with the rules and guidelines of Class O liquor license, I intend to issue this unless there's any issues from the board. And finally, I think we have police video presentation. I think we're going to move that to another date on the, just for time purposes, we're going to move that presentation to another date. So you can postpone that one. So, but it being we are on police video presentation, I'd just like to recognize our police department and our support for our police department with all that's going on in the country right now. And just thank you Chief for running such a great operation and we're 100% behind you. All right. Next item we have this evening is... Go ahead TL.
What?
Did you have a comment?
Oh, no. Other than the fact that I'm so damn proud of our police department, not one.
Yep. Next item we have this evening is question and answer. Does anybody have any questions or staff? During that, we'll move on to the town hall portion, which I think some people in the audience might be interested in. Because of the size of the crowd, I will, we'll want to try to keep your comments to three minutes. State your name and your address for the record. And for those of you that aren't familiar with how the board, the logistics of how the board meetings run, you'll have a chance to speak at this town hall portion of the meeting. And it'll be on the record. And then we'll go through the entire rest of the agenda. And then the discussion portion for the board and the petitioners for the Ashton Gardens particular item on our agenda will be during the committee of the whole meeting. And that is specifically between staff informing us what they're proposing and us asking the petitioners questions about that. So you'll have a chance to give us your feedback at the town hall, which will go on right now. And if you can, I may step in. I'm not going to try to limit you specifically to three minutes, but if there's a lot of repetition, we'll try to get it moving along with new topics because we've got a lot of emails regarding this situation. So, that being said, if anybody would like to address the board, this is the time to step up to the podium there, just state your name and address for the record. And try to keep it to three minutes. I don't know who that is.
Good evening, esteemed mayor, board members, Lorna, Brian, staff. My name's Eric Shipman. I can spell it if you need that, at 883 Prairie. First of all, I just want to echo the comments and the sentiments of many of the people in the community and what our mayor and our fair reverend had mentioned regarding our police department, police officers everywhere. About two hours ago, we learned of another heinous murder of a police officer, this time in Kansas City. And so clearly, our thoughts go out with all the brothers and sisters in blue. And we're very lucky to have the organization that we have here in the community. First of all, I want to commend the board for being as pro-business as you are. As we all know, the board has tried to set policies and practices and encourage business to come to our community. That has many great things for the residents and I'm glad that you're doing that. I'm glad that you're trying to look for alternative businesses and this Wedding Chapel is certainly an alternative business. I do find it kind of ironic that it competes with the village's own golf course, which we spent several hundred thousand dollars on to renovate for weddings, but I realize that you can't take that into your deliberations either. I guess my question comes down to, do we need this? And the first question, of course, is location, 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 as it is with any real estate transaction. I suspect many of the people who are here are adjacent or very near neighbors to this proposed location. Although I do not live terribly close, I live close enough that it has a real concern for me. It just seems that there are better locations for this type of business in our community. As you're well aware, we have several vacancies in the community, especially along Route 20 where there are, there's TIF funding and some other things that might be of real interest to this entrepreneur. And hopefully, they can consider those, some types of things. Additionally, there's been other businesses recently who have been denied because of their location or their proximity to residential neighborhoods. Businesses who would not have drawn nearly the same type of crowds or the same number of people. And so I hope you'll take that into consideration. Again, some of my friends and neighbors, if we discuss this, they've said, "Well, that lot's been vacant forever." And you're right, it probably literally has been vacant forever. But I guess, I guess the question then begets, so is now the right time to build just anything there because it comes along? What if it was an adult entertainment facility? Would we allow that to be built there? It would certainly bring in more tax revenue. What about a waste transfer station? They bring in a lot of revenue. But is that the right location for that too? So I'd ask you to consider those things in your deliberation. And of course, the plan commission, I hope they'll consider these things too. And then lastly, again, as you know, I'm very pro-business and I know the board is, and I think the village tries to take a pro-business stance in everything that they do. But let's, as we must, consider the worst and bleak alternative. What if this business builds this beautiful facility? And I looked at the art of surrendering and it is a unique and beautiful facility. But what if it doesn't work? Then we have this big vacant chapel and banquet facility in the middle of a residential neighborhood. To be used for what? We can't fill the Dominick store. We can't fill other retail space. And yet, we're going to permit the building of this, excuse me for saying this to the owner, this white elephant of a building that has really kind of one unique use. And if it doesn't work, what do we do with it? I have additional concerns about the parking and everything else. I will promise, at least for my one vote, keep an open mind and to sit through as much of the presentation as my time will allow. But I hope you'll take those things into consideration with your deliberation and I hope we'll pass that along to the plan commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Jim Regan. I live at 446 Hillendale Drive, along with my wife Anne and our two daughters, in the East Point Estates neighborhood. I'm here this evening to beg of the board to stop this plan to allow Ashton Gardens to build at the intersection of Prospect and Devon. I've been on the website. I've seen the pictures of beautiful chapels at other locations. However, let's not be swayed by the window dressing. With or without a preceding wedding ceremony, what you effectively would be proving tonight is a private dance club to be adjacent to one of the quietest residential neighborhoods in Bartlett. This business would host a one-hour ceremony, followed by a four-to-six-hour party, where hundreds of people would gather to eat, drink alcohol, and dance to music either from a DJ or a live band, which is really no difference from a dance club. We've known for years that this plot is zoned for commercial use, but this particular business is the wrong type of business for this location. Here are some of these specific issues I have with the plan. One is definitely to increase traffic. This location is not adjacent to a major road like Lake Street or Route 59. From any direction, guests would be passing through residential areas both before and after they're celebrating. There'd be parking issues. Should this business's lot ever be full, where would the excess vehicles go? I can tell you, they're going to end up on the streets in our neighborhood. Even if overflow parking is added at Cross Prospect or allowed at Leysburg Park, I'm certain that people will choose the closest option, which is the streets in our neighborhood. Keep in mind that with both of these issues above, our homes in that neighborhood are only accessible via two streets, Hillendale and Lido, which are the closest streets to this facility. There's no possible way for the residents of our neighborhood to avoid this business by traveling south or west. There's just no roads. This business would bring an increase in noise, particularly late into the night. Again, any reception hall would have the same issues of a dance club once the party begins. In addition to music, you'll have guests and staff alike gathering outside to smoke and talk. This would be followed by over-served guests stumbling to their cars and occasionally fighting in the parking lot. I grew up just outside Chicago, where CTA bus passed by my house five times an hour. And I can tell you, from over a block away, I could still hear the music and the noise from a nearby dance club. Most alarming for this plan moving forward would be the certain increase in impaired drivers traveling through the heart of Bartlett. If allowed to open, Ashton Gardens would increase the number of drunk drivers on the roads of Bartlett, simply by the nature of their business. It's be true of any business that routinely offers a six-hour open bar. So I don't mean to single them out. I simply want to highlight how horrible a decision this would be to place this type of business in a residential location. Because there's simply no way for guests attending events at this location to leave Bartlett without passing through many residential areas in town. I completely understand the need to get more business into Bartlett, but this is just a bad idea for this particular location adjacent to so many homes and within airshot of hundreds more. If you approve this plan to move forward, you would be allowing a loud business to operate late into the evening when working people and families are trying to sleep, and also inviting impaired drivers to meander through the streets of Bartlett, trying to find their way home. I ask you, would you want this type of business on your block, behind your home? I can assure the people in our neighborhood do not. And I implore you to stop this project from moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Pat Bowman. And I was here for the first time last week, the last board meeting. And that's when I found out about the, that's when we were going through our, the worst part of our water taste and odor issue. So because I am retired, being a former Realtor for 20 years, I have the time to work on this. And that's what I spent my whole week doing. I learned some very interesting things, not only on the internet, but through many, many telephone calls with various people, with the EPA in Elgin, and also the Illinois EPA. And they would then give me another contact. So it was very interesting. And I wanted to give you all two websites that would be very important if you want to just make a notation of this. One is very simple. It's just called The Friends of the Fox. And you'll find many, many interesting things on that website that will tell you about the harmful effects of the algae. That is what's causing this, you know, bad taste. I'm happy to say, the last couple days, it seems to have calmed down. However, I still can't drink it. It isn't like it was prior to the event. And, you know, unfortunately, through all my conversations, I found out about some very harmful bacteria that can come about. And that is on that website. And there is also the Illinois EPA website that will also go into that. And one is very short, but not very sweet. It's called HAB, H-A-B. And it stands for Harmful Algal Bacteria. And this is something that through another director, various people I talked to, I would find out a little bit from one and a little bit from another. And this one, he was a toxologist, a doctor and his degree in toxology. And he said, "You know, Pat," he said, "you don't have to, the taste and odor does not have to be present in order for that algal, which is spelled A-L-G-A-L, to be present." Algal, if you look it up, is an extremely harmful bacteria that can kill you within a half an hour and you won't even know that you have it, because it affects your respiratory. So you might think you're getting a heart attack, but it's actually brought about from either, it could be from eating fish that have, you know, been in the water, or that in some way you have ingested it. And so that was a very... I then said, "Well, then how do we test for that? How often?" He said, "I'll have to give you another name." So then I called someone else to find out that we only test once a year for that. Now that is very concerning to me. So we have several ponds where people fish, like Beaver Pond.
Ms. Bowman, you're at five minutes right now, so I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay. Then I will bring this up and will be, do I understand we'll be discussing this on August 16?
The August meetings, yes. And also, obviously, you can always discuss it with our water department as well. I think we do tests quite frequently.
Not for that bacteria, not for algal.
Okay. Thank you.
But, well, I'll go, you know, into that then at the next meeting. And I don't know if the Moms of Bartlett, did anybody from that organization come tonight? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the information. Anyone else like to address the board at this time?
My name is Roy Hunt. I'm here with my wife Pam.
Tell your name and address, please.
H-U-N-T, Roy, Pam, 442 Hillendale Drive. And we're concerned on what the capacity of this Ashton Gardens is going to be. Or do you have an answer?
We'll find out here pretty shortly at the committee of the whole meeting. Yeah.
That's it.
And it's in our packets, so it's in there. Somebody has it up the top.
I wanted to get it on record.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yep. Thank you, Roy.
Good evening, members of board. My name is Brian Ozog, O-Z-O-G, 568 Versailles. That's in the Castle Creek subdivision. I'm actually stepping up to comment on one of the other items on the agenda, the Spalding Road Improvement Project. My wife here in the audience, I want to reserve a portion of my time so she can speak. She's quite well-versed on the matter. She's quite well-versed on the matter. As you're aware, Global Recycling occupies the intersection of Lambert and Spalding. Global Recycling is currently, their employees, staff members, and customers are parking along the Spalding Road directly in front of Lambert. That area is becoming quite congested between that parking and the truck traffic that's going in and out of the existing entryway. The proposal, if I understand it correctly, is to move that driveway onto Lambert, which is a no-truck zone, which would be interesting in and of itself. It may also encourage additional parking along Lambert, which doesn't currently exist by staff members and customers. It will also cause, without, without a turn lane at that location, trucks backing in or pulling out of that location to congest Lambert further. That includes, there are only two points of egress and ingress into the Castle Creek subdivision, one existing at Lake and Lambert, which is also occupied by a commercial trucking industry, and another one's going in next door, and then, of course, at Spalding and Lambert, which makes it extremely difficult, whether it's bus traffic, school traffic, or individuals trying to get to work to get out in the morning. Those trucks are there as early as 7:00 o'clock, and it's becoming quite congested. As I said, I wanted to reserve some of my time for my wife to step up.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, I'm Allison Ozog, 568 Versailles Drive. In regards to the Spalding Improvement, I believe, the only time we ever heard this was from the Bartlett Examiner. I've talked to several residents in Castle Creek, and nobody knew anything about this. One of my biggest concerns is the safety of it. There's a park right down the road that now you would have trucks going in and out. There's already trucks that come and violate the no-truck rule on that street, and now that you're inviting more stuff. Every morning, I cross the Metro and the CNN railroads every morning, and I get stalled by a empty, humongous truck that has to back up into Global Recycling. I have several pictures that I just dropped, but that shows all the time that they're blocking the intersection. I understand it is a blind spot right there, and they're not supposed to be parking there, but they do. Today, there are up to seven cars on our street of Spalding. And now if you move the entrance to Lambert, now you're going to have all of that on Lambert. There's also inappropriate behavior that these trucks do while they are waiting to the Global Recycling to open up. And unfortunately, I get to witness that while I wait to cross the tracks. So I would appreciate, I believe this is part of the quiet zone, is what we tried to research on, that to try to, so the Metro doesn't have to blow its horn. There's supposed to be a no-blow, no-horn section. Me personally, I would rather have the horn than the traffic on Lambert. So, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm the resident of 204 Lido Trail, and my name is Isha Sabod. I'm concerned about the construction of Ashton Garden because of the pollution noise, and they are going to make the retention pond close to my backyard. So I am very much concerned about it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Do you want me to ask her her name? Ma'am, lady that was just up, can you repeat your address, please?
204 Lido Trail.
204?
204 Lido.
Lido.
Lido Trail.
Lido. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Radacek, 216 Lido Trail. I live there with my husband and a child, 11-year-old daughter. And I'm amazed that property like this is even being considered for our neighborhood. The area may be zoned commercial, but a simple drive over there would show that it is surrounded by houses and townhouses on all four sides. This strip mall, this small strip mall on the corner does not change this fact. On two sides of the property will be adjacent to people's backyards. One is mine. You are considering putting a venue in our neighborhood that will be noisy, cause traffic congestion, and despite anyone's best efforts, will introduce drunk drivers onto our streets where kids play. How can you, how can of us, how can you of us feel safe having our kids outside with that venue next door? We live in Bartlett because it is safe, quiet, and has good schools. Couple months ago, Bartlett was ranked one of the 20 safest neighbors, neighborhoods in the nation. Three years ago, it was number three. With this venue, Bartlett will no longer be loud, will no longer be safe, and will be loud. After all these issues start, we will have a hard time moving. Our property values will drop, along with our house being a lot less desirable. Our property is finally regaining its value. Now Ashton Gardens is threatening that recovery. I have not even talked about the workers and 300 guests parking on our streets. No one can claim the parking for 130 cars is satisfactory. If they do, they are lying. So where those cars park, there will be loud parking guests and drivers that have been drinking, and they will be parked in our neighborhoods. What will you say to the family that loses a child to a drunk driver?
Thank you, Monica.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Krishna Kalagara.
Krishna.
Krishna, K-R-I-S-H-N-A, Kalagara, 637 Versailles Drive, Bartlett, from the Castle Creek of Bartlett Community. I'm here to, just to support what Mrs. and Mr. Ozog had mentioned about the proposal to move the entrance for this auto junkyard from Spalding to Lambert. We've been already having a lot of problems with the truck entrance we have on Spalding right now, with trucks backing out, and then trucks and pickups and customers parking their cars and trucks on the blind spot, which is a real, real blind spot that has never been addressed. And this Lambert has been a quiet road until so far, and there is a no-truck entrance right at the beginning of the Lambert Road, and I don't know how it could be made into a truck entrance when there is a, it's a no-truck zone for that Lambert Road. The second thing is, there is a bike and a walkway starting from the Spalding Road on the, I don't know, is that north or south side of the Lambert? It goes all the way up to Edinburgh, which is a wide walkway and a bike path, and we see families and kids and everybody riding and walking, dogs walking that road, so that's going to disrupt the, the whole purpose of the bike path. And I would request the board to see what can be done to stop this, and then improve that intersection parking. And I know it's Illinois law or Bartlett law that trucks are, no car should be parked so few, so much distance from an intersection, and that's a very intersection where it have, we have the train tracks in, in a very close proximity, and then trucks are parked across the, very, I mean, right at the intersection, which is a very, I mean, causing problems and then very, so I would request the village board to see what can be done to stop this proposal, and also to improve the parking conditions and in and out conditions at the current entrance to the junkyard. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Krishna.
Excuse me, I gotta put the cheaters on.
Hi, my name is Jim Sauter. I live at 237 John Drive. I believe it's Lot 25 in East Point Estates. The reason I'm here is to oppose the Ashton Gardens reception area that's gonna be going up. And the reason is, I believe it's gonna change our neighborhood a lot, okay, just with the parking. I went in a meeting at Pastamia, and I met the gentleman who's gonna be putting it up, and I talked to him, and he was telling me, because I asked him, "What's the matter with, like Bartlett Fresh Market or Dominix? Why couldn't we just revamp that area?" And he said that it's not the way he wants his building to be. He'd have to tear it all down in order for him to put that up. And I understand that, okay, he's got a vision that he wants to put up and stuff like that, but the overflow, he said he's gonna have parking spots of 143 people. And then when I went to the Village Planning Commission, like two days later, I talked to the lady, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, but she told me she had to revamp that parking area and brought it down to 133. And then he's gonna have 30 employees working there. So now there's 103 spots available. And then she said she's gonna talk to him and see if she can convince him to use, like the Gorski parking lot, which is the Bartlett Fresh Market. And she said that, you know, that's all she can do is just ask her to do that. Well, my concern is, when you're leaving Prospect, because there's an exit, going on Prospect, if you take a left, you'll hit the stoplight. If you take a right, you go down Prospect heading south. And what my concern is, those people turning right, well, they'd make another right, go down Lido, and now at 11:00, you have a big traffic jam coming through our neighborhood in the afternoon. If he has a wedding reception at 5:00, is that gonna be the same concern? Because these people, I mean, if I was doing it, I'd do the same thing. I'd probably come out that parking lot, see the stoplight, and say, "You know what? I'm not gonna wait here. I'm gonna make a right-hand turn, and I'll come through to the subdivision." And when I brought that up to her, she said, "It's a public street, and anybody can park there." I understand that, but if the parking lot's filled, and they don't want to walk from Gorski's all the way back over to where Ashton's Garden's gonna be, I'm telling you, they're gonna park on Lido. There's no answers or buts about it, and they're gonna walk around. Half of them are probably gonna try and go through the yards and find out there's an eight-foot fence there, and I doubt that anybody in a suit and a dress is gonna try and hop the fence, so that means they're probably gonna have to come back again. So those are my concerns there. And then the hours of operation, okay? I was under the impression it was only gonna go to 11:30. Then a letter got passed around our neighborhood saying it's gonna go till 12:30. So those people could be exiting at 12:30 after, you know what? I was young, you know, 20 to 30 years old, popping beers and stuff like that, having beers in a parking lot. And then he made a comment that he's gonna have security there. And then he said he's gonna have armed security there. And I'd like to know, what kind of crowd are we gonna be having here that we need armed security? Okay? And then, what I don't understand is that the village of Bartlett owns Bartlett Hills, and the Park District owns Villa Olivia. And there's two places where we have reception halls, and you're asking this guy to come in to build a reception hall that's gonna take business away from us? That, you know what? Those are my tax dollars going there. The amount of money that we pay for taxes now is quite a bit. And I'd like to know also, what kind of tax incentive is he getting? If he's getting any? I don't know. Okay? That's, but I would like to, well, on record saying, I'd like to know what it will be if you guys are gonna give him any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
I'm Angelita Garcia. I live in 624 Greenwich Court, and I am here to speak against building Ashton Gardens in our neighborhood. I may, my residence may not be directly beside Ashton because we have this, this vacant lot, I believe it's part of, part of the Park District. However, I am concerned about our property taxes going down and the quality of our neighborhood, potential for drunk driving, safety of our children and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
I am at 213 John Drive. My wife and I have been residents for 23 years in the East Point Estates. Glad to see all my fellow neighbors here, the police departments. We've known each other fairly well over the years, because I have some teenagers, and they've always done a good job. I'd like to welcome the veterans here, and thank you for coming. I have two issues. I support not putting in the permission for this building and the business. Okay? All of my neighbors have voiced their opinions very clearly, and I support that. But the number two item is the traffic, okay? Our neighbors at 233 Lido, a few months ago, had a professional event at the house. They were very courteous. They arranged for a valet service to park cars, and they parked in the neighborhood, and that was fine. It was a professional event. And when we were, we were allowing ourselves to come out, people were going into that subdivision at Lido. There's no room. If you have cars parked on the street on each side of Lido, the north and the south side of Lido, and a car coming and going into Lido, at the same time, there's not enough room for there to be a safe egress and access to that location. Has anybody looked at the idea of putting in no parking signs there?
Currently, without Ashton even going in, that's a separate issue, you're saying?
Yeah.
I don't believe we have, but we can certainly...
Would that be a good idea?
That's, that's why we have people come up and talk to us.
That's, that's exactly what my point is.
Okay.
If you decide that you're gonna grant permission to this, I would suggest strongly that that's something that you consider. It's a safety hazard. If, while I was coming in, my, the back end of my car was sticking out on Prospect, and somebody came in and tapped me, I'm just waiting for somebody else to move in and move out. There's no room when there's cars parked on both sides of the street. People, people coming east and west.
No parking this side of the street type thing?
Both sides of the street.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you, Joe.
My name is Scott Erickson. I live at 211 Lido Trail. I'm representing probably the East Point Estate subdivision. 20% to 30% of the residents are here today. In my survey that I've done, majority of the residents at East Point Estates are opposed to this, and I just want to put that on record as my preliminary survey. But naturally concerning to all of us in the subdivision will be the effects of this facility on our quality of life, property values, and all the other things that people have been mentioning. So far, it's been a peaceful, tranquil-type neighborhood for us to grow, that we've raised our families, and I've been there 20-some years. However, we all need to understand the facility like this is going to bring in people, traffic, noise, orders, activity. We all understand the business side of this. And the primary concerns that we have right now, obviously, are what has been brought up, the roadways, drunk drivers, and safety to Bartlett families, spill-over parking into, you know, legal, legally parking into our streets, back-to-back weddings, back-to-back events. How are these things gonna be, you know, worked through the transition period where you've got excessive cars for a few hours, if that ever does happen? Noise. How are we gonna deal with the loud noise coming out of the building? And I know the, the builder is promoting quiet walls, and he's saying that the, the noise will not transmit, but as an engineer, I know low frequencies get through anything, high frequencies don't, so we will hear thumping. And then we're gonna also hear the thumping of the guests' cars in the parking lot. Lot of the people that back up to that facility have two-story homes, and the fence that's being built is one-story, so when they're up in their bedrooms, they're gonna look down, and they're gonna see and hear all the effects of that parking lot. And then what about the, the dumpsters and the loud banging of garbage trucks and things that happen at 9:00 on Monday morning? I mean, these things can be worked through somehow, but we want to make sure that they're addressed. And finally, what someone else mentioned earlier, what are the rules as far as the future? It's a great concept. We've seen on their website great examples of how they have, have this type of a business, but if it does fail, what happens? What happens to the buildings? Can they be changed? And who's gonna move in at some of these buildings? What types of businesses can go into these buildings? So with that, I want to just leave three things. I've got pictures of what Lido Trail, it's just a primary one, what... I've got pictures of what Lido Trail, it's just a primary one, what that looks like when it is fully loaded with cars. I just want to submit that as a piece of, an item to put for the record. We've got some photographs here of typical facilities, like the Seville, which is right on Barrington Road, we all know of, although it's a completely different type of facility. But there are things around it, like, you know, dumpsters, and smoking lounges, and things like that, that maybe will not happen at this place, but something to consider. And then finally, we've got some aerial views here of their facilities at, where they are located elsewhere in the United States. And from what I've gathered, most of them have a barrier of trees, forests, and they don't seem to be too close to neighbors like they are going to be here. So with that, I close.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Are we going to have those photographs introduced into the record?
Yes, it's been pretty good. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time?
My name is Sophia Patkowicz. I live on 432 Anita Drive in East Point Estate. I just wanna ask, did anybody even thought that the baseball park is right there? And weddings many times are not exactly at 5 o'clock. Many of them are 12, and lunch after all, or showers, or wedding showers, or whatever. There are kids riding bicycles to the park for the games, and not always with the parents. Did anybody even thought that that could be a hazard for the kids with so many cars and all that? Besides, also, I just wanted to point that, the dumpster with the garbage pickup and so. We can hear rain, which is no problem. We can set up even a clock against the trains running through, but that is no, it's like almost a mile away. So dumpster next door to us, it would be just unbelievable noise to us, I would think. And that, it's not gonna be only on Saturday. It most likely will be at least Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and not only like one wedding and one, some kind of party or so. I don't think this is the right place for such events and for the business like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point? I'd like to address the board. What time? If you'd like to. Open, open mic. For the next two minutes.
Thank you very much. Do I have three minutes?
Yes, you do.
Not sure I can...
It's not a hard three.
Well, thank you very much for, and I thank the residents. This is a pretty good crowd, huh? Yeah, we draw pretty good crowds. The questions and comments and concerns of the residents are exactly the same everywhere we go. I wrote down about 18 items that I would have to consider speculation, but I'd be happy to address quite a few of them. But I can tell you in general, and there are letters on record to the city from at least two cities, where, current Texas and Sugar Hill, Georgia, outside of Dallas and Atlanta respectively, from the mayors praising our business, and our community involvement, and our good neighboring. We have three properties actually, that, three out of the four current properties, that are directly adjacent to homeowners, two of them virtually exactly the same number that we have here, and have not had any issues with them at all. A lot of the, a lot of the concerns, private dance club, we're not a private dance club. We're a very high-end, very expensive wedding facility. The staff that we have, our company is run by the top professionals in the industry. Our level of integrity and business ethics and concern for the community and our neighbors is better than any business that I know. So we understand the value of that. We understand the value of being a good neighbor. We understand the value of being an invisible neighbor at times. There are things required by Ashton Gardens that is, it's certainly available to the public. There are traffic studies done at our expense. The traffic studies show that there will be no impact on, from a matter of congestion or otherwise, even during peak hours. It shows maximum usage on a Friday afternoon between 5 and 6 at the corner of Bartlett and Prospect on Bartlett, going either way at 86 percent. A maximum potential of 86 percent. We have, there are, and by the way, we, we have to follow laws and ordinances and regulations set up by the state, and set up by the county, and set up by this, this village. So it's very tight and very restrictive, or we couldn't even get this far. Our parking is adequate by everybody's calculation. Should there be a need for parking, we're going, we're going to find some, a local business that has some, a parking lot that we can, we can use the parking and shuttle. Probably first people that would, that would use off-site parking would be our staff. We haven't had to use it yet at any property. Doesn't mean we won't. I understand that. There's first time for everything. But our, our parking meets and exceeds all of the requirements set up and reviewed and approved by the village. Scott, I respect that you're an engineer, but our, you won't hear noise out of our buildings. I'd be happy to show you the plans. Pretty darn solid. Maybe if you get up and put your ear by the window or something, but you won't hear it in your, you will not hear it at the homes.
At the risk of being too repetitive, I can assure you, you're gonna have to answer all these questions again in the committee of the whole. So you could wait and answer them all again, because we'll ask you all of these again.
Right. Well, why don't we do that?
Okay.
All I can say is, we, we appreciate the input. You know, our, our view is, we think it's a, it has been for all the other cities. You know, the location is great for us, for a lot of reasons. We spent a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of study on this location. We think it's, it's a good business for the community. We're gonna be really great neighbors, and again, be happy to address any of the concerns. And I will just close in saying, you know, there's, we can, there's all kinds of speculation on what could happen. We have responses or requirements that will address many of those, and I guess that's on the 11th...
The committee of the whole, yeah.
I look forward to that.
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address? Can I hold you to the quick, or not?
Good evening. My name is Mike Baggett, B-A-G-G-O-T. I live at 200 West Lido. I've been a resident for 34 years. I grew up here. I moved back here with my children. I actually bought at East Point with the intention of living there the rest of my life, and my children know, know no other home. I want to address some things that Mr. Schreiber said. Another personal note, I'm an attorney. I do insurance defense work. I represent companies like Mr. Schreiber's. I represent bars. Unfortunately, you're gonna have intoxicated people at the facility. Regardless of what he says, or may not happen, it happens everywhere. There's gonna be drunks there, there's gonna be fights there, there's gonna be incidents there. Look at Cadillac Ranch. How many calls do you have in a night, on a Friday or Saturday night at Cadillac Ranch? And now you're gonna move that into a neighborhood where children are playing? It's a public safety issue. You're the custodians of the village. Do what's right. It's public safety, it's personal safety. I've got a 15-year-old and a 13-year-old. I will not leave them a home alone while there's an event going on at Ashton Gardens now. I will probably have to move out of that, that street if that, if this happens. We have to look at potential liability for the neighbors, for things that happen with all the people who are drinking there. You go to reception to have a good time, and you're gonna go there to drink, whether it's 300 or 150, whether it's two people who are drunk. I represented many places like this where fights happen. People have been killed. Look up the William Tell Inn in, in Chicago. There was a killing there. Look at JB's. Killing's there. It happens. We've gotta protect the community. You're the custodians. Do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett.
I'll try real quick. Is it okay if I were to submit these photos of this balding intersection right now?
It's a pretty tough act to follow. Does anybody else want to go after him?
Hi, my name's Scott Ummel. I live at 225 John Drive. I'm one of probably the only two youth here, so I'd like to give my kind of perspective in it. I'm also a part of the National Guard as a military police officer. My perspective is purely law enforcement side. Correct me if I'm wrong from the law enforcement standpoint, but we have five sectors in Bartlett. I've done many ride-alongs with Bartlett, and I've been on many DUI calls in Bartlett. With a DUI call, if you have a fight, there's gonna be multiple officers responding. So there you have two, possibly three, sectors that are not covered in Bartlett anymore. If there's a DUI, that DUI takes a lot of time, up to hours, to be able to process, where you now have officers who are supposed to be guarding and safekeeping the rest of this community, in their, in their sectors, who are gone for hours on end possibly, because they have to call the state, they have to do many things in their process. So with, with, if there's a fight, there might be even more. So now you have a whole town who is not being safekeep or guarded by the people who are supposed to do that because of one establishment. Plus, we have Bartlett Hills Golf Course. That's a beautiful venue for a wedding. We have Cadillac Ranch, like they said. There's many places that these people, these law enforcement agents have to guard. So another thing is that, from the Ashton Gardens representative, he appointed a lot of opinions as facts, I believe. So I would just like to see some of those facts backed up by statistics. Like he said that there, you're not gonna hear any music. I would like to see a test done by that. How, how do you know? He's, he's just pointing out opinions in his part that he's presenting as facts. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm Patty Ummel, 225 John Drive. I'm that young man's mother. They have no nothing but to grow up in this house in Bartlett, and he's very emotional about it, as is everybody here. We don't understand it. We don't get it. It's not the right thing to do. I don't know. What other thing was concerning me is when we got a note in our neighborhood saying that, as you might already know, we've purchased this property. Actually, no. We didn't already know this. And it's not okay. And you can't just say, by the way, we purchased it, and this is, you know, it's gonna be beautiful, and blah, blah, blah. We don't, it doesn't sit right with us. We don't want it there. We've been living there for 22 years. It's the wrong thing to do. I don't know what else happens, because I don't know all the politics of this, but this should say pretty much it all, and how we feel. And if, it would be a devastating thing for this community to have the people who have been here backing up Bartlett to actually have to leave Bartlett because of something like this, which a couple people mentioned and I'm even thinking about. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate my son saying something that takes a lot of courage to come up here. I wasn't even gonna do anything, but I can't just let him do this by himself. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have a lot of questions coming up. Traffic, parking, competition, tax incentives, no parking on certain sides of the street, rules for the future, resident safety, patrolling situations, noise. These are all questions that'll be answered or asked during the whole, committee of the whole, so. Thank you for being here and voicing your opinion. If there's no one else that'd like to address the board, we will move on with our meeting. And that brings us to the standing committee reports portion of the meeting this evening. First standing committee report is the Planning and Zoning Committee. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item was addressed on the consent agenda, which brings us to item number two, the Class 6B application for 802 West Devon Avenue. And for that, I'll turn it over to staff.
George Ray V. Leotis, on behalf of his client, is requesting a resolution from the village supporting its Class 6B application for the former main steel plant at 802 East Devon Avenue. The applicant proposes purchasing, rehabilitating, and dividing the building into smaller units while lowering the property taxes and making the building more attractive to prospective tenants. The Class 6B incentive lowers the property's assessment to 10% of the market value for the first 10 years, 15% in the 11th year, and 20% in the 12th year, constituting a substantial reduction in the level of assessment from the normal 25%. Applications to the Cook County assessor must include a resolution or ordinance from the property's municipality supporting the application. And if they do get this, they, they will be looking at a total cost savings of about $2.1 million in property taxes. And the petitioner is here and would like to introduce themselves.
My name is George Brevell Leotis. I'm an attorney, and I represent Demetrius Pulokhefalos, the prospective purchaser of 802 Devon Avenue in Bartlett. The subject property consists of approximately 89,000 square feet. It's an industrial building. It's in Cook, it's in the Cook County part of the village, and the subject property has been vacant for at least two years. In Cook County, there is a program, a tax incentive program, which is called the Class 6B. And in Cook County, the properties are assessed on a two-tiered basis. Commercial and industrial properties are assessed at 25% of fair market value, while residential and residential mixed use are assessed at 10% of fair market value. In all, in all the other counties in the state of Illinois, all properties are assessed at 33 1/3 regardless of the type. There are main differences between the tax formulas, between how the tax formula, what numbers are used in the equalization factor and the tax rates. But one thing is for sure. Commercial and industrial properties that are in Cook County pay more tax on a per-square footage basis than commercial and industrial in DuPage County. Considering that the subject property has been vacant for at least two years, and considering that the property is functionally, that the building is functionally absolessent, in that it does not meet today's tenants' or industrial needs, and also considering that it is in the Cook County part of Bartlett, in that it pays probably a little bit over double of what the DuPage counterpart industrial properties pay on a per-square-footage basis. And also, finally, considering the significant monetary investment that the prospective purchaser, my client, will put into the property of at least between $4 and $5 million over and above the purchase price. We are here tonight respectfully asking for the board to approve the Class 6B property tax incentives. With me tonight is the prospective purchaser, Demetrius Pulokhefalos of Pulokhefalos Enterprises, as well as his architect, Mr. Bart Kalata. One thing that I'd like to finish my part of the presentation tonight is that Mr. Pulokhefalos is a seasoned property owner. He is owner of AGT Technologies, and this company makes plastics, and they hold various patents. And some of these, some of the plastic goods that AGT Technologies makes, for example, when you open a Motorola cellphone, it's the plastic packaging that protects it in the package. When you go into a Walmart, or any other big supermarket, for example, and you look in, right... in the display case or where the product is hanging, there's a plastic casing in which the description of the product is. Mr. Pulokhefalos makes that plastic casing, for example. And just recently, in addition to the AGT Technologies, Mr. Pulokhefalos has been investing in industrial properties, the most recent of which being 150 Gaylord in Alkro Village, in which there too he had taken a functionally absolessent building and demolished approximately 75% of it and substantially renovated and rebuilt that structure. And within months of completing, he was able to successfully find a good quality tenant. And this is the aim of the proposed project here on Devon Avenue. One thing or one aspect of the substantial improvement will be increasing the height of the ceiling from where it's at now between 15 and 20 feet to at least 30 to 35 feet, and also enhancing the electrical voltage, for example, and also compartmentalizing the building. Currently, it's at 89,000 square feet, single use. And we believe that compartmentalizing the various components would maximize the chances of partial to full occupancy versus its current status of complete vacancy. At this point, I'd like to introduce to you Demetrius Pulokhefalos and the architect for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Well, I have a few questions. Do you have any idea how many different tenant spaces you're going to have in the building?
How many different tenants?
How many different tenants?
The building's going to be divided into four different tenants.
Okay. Can you use the microphone, please?
Sorry, I'm just... The building's going to be divided into four different tenants. It'll be 25,000 square feet increments and a 40,000 square feet increment, 43 somewhere there.
Do you have tenants lined up?
No. The one tenant might be in myself. I'm going to bring my own business in there just to occupy the 40,000 square feet, 30, 40 employees.
In order to do that, you'll need to raise the roof, literally.
The 40,000 square feet, no. The 80,000 square feet, demolish it and bring it up ground up to 35, 30 to 35.
We are proposing to remove approximately 48,000 square feet and keep one section of the building, which consists about 42,000 square feet, which is actually on the picture. And what we're proposing to do is to remove the exterior envelope and replace it with new brick and block. That height of the building, of that existing building, will remain, but what we're doing, we're proposing addition to the existing building, which will be about 75,000 square feet, which will be equally divided into three additional units. And those units, you know, they will have increased in the roof height as well as the envelope. Construction of the addition will be consistent with what we're proposing for the renovation.
Have they submitted any site plans, concept plans, for staff review? Have we seen anything like that?
No, they actually, they have not done any of that yet. They're just looking to get the incentive from Cook County first.
And I think that our understanding, at least initially, is that the incentive was more clear-cut than they're indicating now. And probably, we would have had this on committee for some more in-depth questioning had we understood the depth of this. And so you may want to wait until you have some additional information, particularly about the tenants, to move ahead with the incentive.
You know, I can't speak for the entire board, but obviously, you know, we want to see development. This space has been vacant for a long time. The 6B program is out there. But at the same time, it seems like we need some more information, and it seems like you folks need to talk about our plans. So if it's all right with the board, I guess procedurally, I have to make a motion and then we have to move to table it?
Yes.
Okay?
If I may, if I may. The ordinance allows for, well, the Class 6B program will not be implemented by the assessor unless an occupancy permit is issued. However, without an ordinance, there is no roadmap that's put into place. But the Class 6B incentive is only implemented by the assessor, or the assessor will only implement the Class 6B program onto the assessment only when there's occupancy in the building.
Okay. I see what you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, is you need the 6B in order to start the horse.
In order to make the considerable $4 to $5 million, it's good knowing that there is the Class 6B, which will enhance or enable that cash flow.
And at that point, we would go back to committee.
At the same time, I mean, I think it's important to understand what's going on. I mean, with the property before the board consents to this. I mean, we're conceivably losing some tax revenue, and you're talking about replacing, it sounds like most of the building. Most of the building. So this is a...
So the...
Much more complicated than just a 6B.
A Class 6B can be given under three different scenarios. Number one is reoccupancy of a vacant building, a building that's been vacant for at least two years. And here, it meets that criteria. Or construction of a new building. And here as well, we are meeting that criteria. Or number three, substantial rehabilitation. So you can grant it either on one, or the second, or the third.
Okay.
Here, we're presenting all three. And we believe that with a considerable investment of $4 to $5 million, and also considering that because the building is so functionally absolessent, 15-feet ceilings will not accommodate today's typical industrial needs. And where the tax is at its current level right now, it's at, with vacancy, it's at $99,530. With the incentive and occupancy, it would be increased to $129,000. And that's also after a considerable investment of between $4 to $5 million. But to the community, what does that mean? That means all the incidental benefit that would be achieved, and that is you have human beings coming in and out of that building. You have people going out to lunch at local restaurants, Starbucks, coffee shops, whatever the case may be. You have, you know, people that could potentially be employed at this facility, people that live in Bartlett, for example. So there is a considerable amount of incidental benefit aside from the direct benefit. So this is a building that if it continues to remain vacant, it'll just become, I mean, completely useless. And vacant buildings...
Buildings don't like to be vacant.
Not only that, though, but insurance costs are much, much higher because of the potential hazards that vacant buildings can pose to a community. I think filling it up with that considerable monetary investment, making it modern, making it contemporary, and also putting it on a level playing field with other industrial properties on the DuPage side of Bartlett, I think it's only a plus-plus. I think it's a win-win situation for everybody.
I need to ask a couple questions also. Do you have a contract on the building at this time?
Yes, we do.
You have a contract. Is the contract contingent upon the Class 6B incentive?
It is not.
All right. Gentlemen, I'll tell you, I really, you know, I know we need additional information, but he'll have to go through some work with staff. And I would think that rather than have them go back and do any additional research and spend any additional money, you know, that would just, the Class 6B incentive would just be issued to this group. It wouldn't run with the land. I think we should take a look at it and maybe move along with it. We've got, we have a building sitting down there right now that's vacant. I mean, and here we have some people that are eligible, that are being creative and trying to do something with this and bring it back into workable situation, put it back on for the most part, you know, offer jobs and whatnot. And, you know, I would have a problem tabling it. Okay? I think I would move forward with it this evening.
Okay. Can I ask a question? How many other potential suitors for that building have we seen in the last two years?
We've had two since the time that Main Steel left.
And have they all proposed a 6B, or were some of them coming in?
No, they have not. They have not.
But it wasn't at the two-year marker yet?
No, I don't think we're at the two-year marker yet.
We are now, right?
Yeah, I think we are. And I think that we're not, you know, saying that the board should not do this. I think there's a lot of information that would typically cause this to be a committee, where there's an opportunity to ask these kinds of questions that we don't usually do at a board level, and this really should have gone to committee.
Well, I disagree a little bit because they need some type of assurance that if it does go forward, then the 6B is a possibility. Whereas if we don't act tonight, they won't even know if it's a possibility. So it's kind of a chicken and egg type of a situation for the developer. Right?
Okay, so then...
And no fashion is saying yes to this application for a 6B, saying yes to any type of building out there because you'll have to have, I'm assuming you're going to have to have building permits.
Exactly. Exactly. Considering the amount of alteration and new construction that will occur, there must be building permits. Not only that, though, but the Class 6B, if you decide to grant it tonight, it's not something that will be implemented tomorrow. It's something that after approvals by the village and the officials, and only upon issuance of an occupancy permit, will the assessor implement the Class 6B. So it's not something where you can grant the Class 6B and then the property owner can lay idle and let it be vacant for 10 years and enjoy that Class 6B for a period of 10 years. No. From the time of acquisition, from the time of purchase until the time of occupancy, the incentive to raise, to find occupancy is there. The incentive is there, and that incentive is a Class 6B.
Yeah.
In doing the necessary improvements to the structure to bring it to that occupancy state.
Do we know whether they are going to need a variation to raise the building height to what they're proposing?
We will have to come through the site plan review, and at that time, we would see if they would also need a variation. So it would come back before this board.
So even though we may approve this ordinance, we do have recourse?
Correct.
Okay.
But let's turn it around. Let's assume that the purchaser closes, we've granted the 6B, and they decide not to make improvements to the building, but the building is in such condition that they can get the CO.
The 6B has very specific requirements in order to get the money. So they have to use a certain amount of money for rehabilitation, and so they would have to make some type of improvements and follow those guidelines. So they'll also have to go through Cook County and us.
Okay. All right. I move to approve Resolution 2016...
58.
58. A resolution consenting to and supporting approval of Class 6B classification for the abandoned property commonly known as 802 East Devon Avenue, Bartlett, Illinois.
Second.
By trustee Ranky, second by trustee Cammer. Is there any additional discussion?
Do we know what the loss of revenue will be to the village of Bartlett if we grant this?
No, we do not.
Well, it's made... Is the impact spread over all three counties, or is it just spread over Cook County?
No, it's just Cook County.
So the Cook County taxpayers will make up the difference?
All, all, yes.
All the counties in Bartlett will?
All of them, the entirety of Cook County.
No, I'm talking about the loss of revenue to Bartlett. When we do our levy, will the loss be spread over all counties?
I think, yes.
Yeah.
I'm confused by the question. I mean, it's vacant right now and is probably getting tax relief to have lesser taxes because it's vacant. With these improvements, it'll be assessed higher. They would otherwise be higher, and the 6B gives them some tax relief for a period of 10 years, and then it ends, and then it kicks in at whatever the assessed value and times the rate, et cetera, would be. What they're saying is this allows them to make this obsolete building where they're willing to invest the $3 or $4 million in improvement. So those are going to get factored into the new assessment, but there would be some delay to where you would get all the taxes. It's a little bit like a TIF.
Trustee Hopkins, we do have that number. I misspoke.
Yeah, there's actually an exhibit in the packet of information. The fourth to last page actually goes over all of the money.
I may?
Would it be safe to say that the reduction in taxes because it's empty will, once it's been improved and developed, even a discounted Cook County tax rate will be higher than the empty?
Yeah, we'll come out ahead.
That will be the question we'll have on committee.
It's about $30,000 extra a year.
Currently, right now, the taxes with vacancy, without the incentive, are at $99,530. And if the building were to be improved, occupied with the Class 6B at the current square footage, the tax would be approximately $129,000.
There you go.
And the current square footage is 89,000 square feet. The projected square footage after all the improvements will be approximately 113,000 square feet. So that $129,000 can potentially be $135,000, $140,000, for example.
And in 10 years, it'll be double, triple that.
That is correct. More than double. In the 13th year, it'll be more than double.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daaney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That resolution carries. Thank you.
We thank you very much.
Thank you for, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next we have on standing committee reports is Building Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have nothing to report tonight.
Chairman Hopkins. Next we, on the standing committee reports, under Finance and Golf Committee, we have Chairman Daaney.
Mr. President, we have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Daaney. Next, on the standing committee reports, License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaronz.
Well, we've been very, very busy, and fortunately, all of our items have been covered under the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Aaronz. Next item under Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. And finally, for our standing committee reports, under Public Works Committee Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we do have one item, the Spalding roadway improvements. And we discussed at the last board meeting, this went out for bid, the Spalding road improvements that are necessary to obtain a quiet zone at the railway crossing. Five bids were submitted and opened on July 8. The bid range from a high of $448,243.40 to the low of $246,309.05. Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated submitted the low bid of $246,309.05. With that, I'll turn it over to Dan for any other further comments concerning this or staff. Anything else you have to add, Dan?
Other than we've worked with Schroder in the past, and they've done good work, so we'd like to move forward.
We need a motion in a second, then we can have a discussion.
Second. Oh, I don't know if you made the motion.
So that being said, I move the village board approve Resolutions 2016-59. A resolution approving the Spalding roadway improvement, it's agreement between the village of Bartlett and Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated.
Second.
It is moved by trustee Cammer, second by trustee Daaney, and I think we have some discussion on this.
Well, let me ask this. I don't think it's, what we're approving tonight is just part of the Spalding road improvement, so it doesn't directly correlate with the public comments. But what's going on with the parking over there? I mean, I saw those photos, you know, you gotta do something about this.
What we did was, in the contract that the board approved last time, there's 10 off-street parking spaces that would be on the village property for which a license was granted. That was part of what was improved, was this access. And then there were seven of those spaces we were going to pave. The owner of Global Eagle Z LLC and the operator of Global Towing was concerned that that wasn't enough parking and did not sign that agreement. We need an agreement with that owner to...
We need an agreement with that owner to facilitate, so we can close down the entrances to the south end of that property. We met with him today and talked about the ability for him to add 10 more spaces at his cost. Where there'd be a license, he would pay the fair market value for that area to add more parking, and also the cost of filling the area and putting asphalt. So what we would likely, what we would propose is we would bring that agreement back at the next meeting, and the board would vote on that. His concern was that there isn't enough parking. He's parking in different places along Spalding and claims that he hit 10. So if he's paying for it, we think this would solve that problem. And so I think everyone's saying the same thing. That being said, this contract, we're trying to get within the window of I dot, I'm sorry, Metro doing the crossing improvements to try and save some money. And we're working, trying to find out what we can do to not block off his access, make some of the improvements, the alternative entrance to the piece, approve this contract, but not issue it to the contractor until we're sure that we have this gentleman's signature on a revised agreement, and would not proceed until the board approves of the amendment at the next meeting. So it's, you know, we'd like to approve the contract, but not commence the contract or commence work, be sure we have an agreement that the board has seen and is comfortable with.
And is that because the window that Metro is giving us?
That's why we were pushing at the last time. We believed we had an agreement with his attorney, but he's been concerned about parking along and there'd be enough, and I'm concerned with the public-private benefit, et cetera.
And that's where my, my questions are. Have you seen those photos?
Yeah, and I think this will solve, I think what he's proposing solves that.
Okay.
To, yeah, more so than what we had proposed. We felt the 10 was what he had, but when you factor in parking along Spalding, et cetera, you know, if you eliminate that, he probably does need the additional 10, but not on our dime, on his dime.
Okay, so short answer, we're, we're actually working to resolve this situation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, might be a little off-character, but is Brian here? Does that sound like something that is, I mean, does it sound like it's a working situation?
It sounds like the board's trying to address the parking. Assuming that's Lambert.
Yet the entrance will be off of Lambert. They will be able to pull up as far as the entrance goes, even though it was no parking and sort of the trade-off is this quiet zone that'll benefit over 2,000 residents.
There's no change in the trucks that go up and down Lambert. That restriction is still there, and we will ticket them if they do so.
Yeah, once the...
There's a huge empty truck, some, that backs up every single day.
Right.
This truck's been dropping all the traffic down Lambert to get into property.
Well, we gotta work on that. That's a separate problem.
Well, they, they have access right now. We believe that the new access would be safer and more efficient. There would be some trucks, you know, utilizing Lambert to get in, but it'd be safer. And they won't be able to travel down Lambert off of Lake Street once the improvements are done. When the roads are closed, there would be some truck traffic, but when the construction's being done, but once that's done, those same restrictions to keep them from going from Lake Street and pulling in there would, would remain in place.
Okay, there's an extra thing about parking that he wants to add, that these people don't just park them, they linger and wait until their eye was found, they're going to jump there.
Well, but this'll get them off of Spalding and off of parking in wherever. There will be a lot off of the road, um, adjacent to the piece.
So further north?
Further, it'd be just to the north of his piece, along his fence, going west, lined up along the fence to the west.
One last question, is there anything preventing these vehicles from parking on Metro and President, they're not talking about truck traffic, they're talking about us, and they're all trying to...
Then we can enforce no parking and things at that point.
But is there no parking now, right now, and is that being enforced?
I don't believe there's a parking restriction right now. You also have the dog park near there and things too, and people park for that as well.
Well, don't they, putting a truck property or the entrance on there, it doesn't matter if there's a no-truck zone?
You're, they will be allowed access off of Lambert. It's just a little further to the north. So they would be on that little stretch of Lambert, and the trade-off is the quiet zone that'll benefit all those other people and a safer access to their piece.
But that's a pretty old word. It took them years to get a stop sign and try to get a no-truck zone, and then now it's all...
No, there's still the no, there will still be the no-truck zone, but for that little stretch of Lambert to their entrance.
Well, this truck, if somebody had that, it's going to have to almost drive, my road, that up. I see it every morning, it backs up, it's not so short, it's a little drive, it backs up, so that when they're all loaded, they can easily get out of there.
That sounds like something we need to work on with policing the law, I guess, would be the situation.
I think they all do witness to a problem.
Well, we got pictures of it, so.
Yeah.
But me, I did it.
Okay. All right, does everybody, thank you. I think this is kind of a piecemeal deal, and we'll try to keep working on it. Does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for this evening.
We have a vote.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Arons? Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Now that's all we have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is new business. Is there any new business for the good of the order?
Yeah, I have something, Mr. President. I have a request this evening. I would like to, to recognize a special and dedicated individual. Just let me read some of the accomplishments. I have these numbered, actually, they're one through 15. That's pretty amazing. Bicentennial commission 1975 for the U.S. birthday. Number two is the Park District Commissioner from 1979 to 1991. Three is chairman of the Bartlett Salvation Army Unit, 1982 to 2009. President of the Bartlett Chamber of Commerce in 1984. Five is the Park District President in 1986. Six, served on the Economic Development Commission in 1986. Number seven, I'm going to run out of breath. Seven, zoning board of appeals, served on that in 1987. Eight was president of the Elgin PTO in 1999. Nine is the chairperson for the Bartlett Centennial in 1991. Ten, this person was, became a Bartlett living legend in 1991. Eleven was the advisory council for the Iowa State Parents in 1992 through 1995. Twelve, she was the first, I gave it away, first chairman of the Bartlett Fourth of July Committee in 1993 through 1994. Thirteen was the Bartlett Veterans Memorial Foundation, served on that from 2006 through 2009. Fourteen is the, she was the president of Bartlett Rotary in 2009. And lastly, village trustee from 1991 to the present. Also received a couple of different awards, which was the Melvin Jones Award issued by the Bartlett Lions Club in 2008, and the Paul Harris Fellow issued by the Bartlett Rotary in 2007. And with that, I'm asking, I'm, I'm making a motion that we obtain a plaque for T.L. Arons, that's who I was speaking of, and we have this inscribed on that plaque, and then the plaque be placed on the village fountain in the downtown area. So with that, I make a motion.
Oh, my God.
You're supposed to mute, T.L. Does anybody have any discussion about it?
They do.
Don't forget I'm listening.
I think, I think it's a very, I think it's a very nice idea to honor the, the decades of work that trustee Arons has put into this community. I think it's part of who we are as Bartlett, that we recognize people who step forward and, and help. I think it's a great idea, and I'm sure Brian's going to tell us that we're not going to vote on, on the motion. That's not on the agenda, but it certainly seems to be the consensus of the board.
Okay.
That we want to move forward with, with how to do this.
I think you left out a lot of information, Ray. She's been on the Lions Club for how many years, T.L.?
Yeah.
She's been on the Rotary Club for more years than I can count. She's been an active member of the community for a long, long time.
Well, after putting, after putting all this together, I know that it's, will be reviewed and scrutinized by some other individuals, and I'm sure there would be additions. This is not the final copy.
Yeah. So I guess the directive is just to have the staff come up with some ideas, or we can figure out, you know, what it would look like, a plaque or something, and...
I've got it all covered.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. So do we have a consensus from the board? Yes?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ray.
All right.
All right.
I'll move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Ray. Trustee Dany.
I have, I have a little something if they just have a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I was, uh, just happened to run across this little typewritten poem that was in some of my grandmother's papers. My grandmother, so, you know, she was, um, pretty old. Anyway, this poem reads, "Five thousand years ago, Moses said, 'Take up your shovel, mount your ass or camel, and I will lead you to the promised land.' Five thousand years later, Roosevelt said, 'Lay down your shovel, sit on your ass, and light up your camel.'" And, and if you don't watch out, Truman will take away your shovel and take away your promised land. "I'm glad that I am an American. I'm glad that I am free. I wish I was a great big dog and Truman was a tree." So unhappiness with leadership is not new at all. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Arons. That was very enlightening. With that, I will, any questions at all?
No.
You know what we're going to do? We're probably going to take like a five-minute break. I think it'd be good for the board to breathe. So we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll go directly into the village, the committee of the whole meeting after a five-minute break. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Carbonero, second by trustee Ranky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Arons?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.